Good evening, I'm Dan Eastgate, President of the Bismarck Public School Board. It's 5:15 on Monday, October 14th, I call this meeting to order. Welcome to those of you who are joining us both here and online. You can find our agenda and follow along online under the School Board tab at bismarckschools.org. Mr. Scher, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eastgate?
Here.
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Pressky?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Dr. Fosnot, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Dr. Fosnot. Also, in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day today, we'd like to say thank you to our BPS Indigenous Education staff across the district. Thank you for all you do for our students. Item 1C is the BPS mission, vision, and values. The BPS mission is to empower every learner to thrive. The BPS vision states, "Together, our strong relationships build inclusive, collaborative, and innovative environments that create agency and inspire a passion for learning, excellence, and discovery." The BPS values are inclusion, excellence, innovation, and leadership. You can also find a link in the agenda at the BPS Strategic Plan. Item 2 is to adopt the agenda. What are the wishes of the board? Mr. Hager?
I move to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Board Member Pressky. Mr. Scher?
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pressky?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Jumping into the agenda, item 3, focus on success. We have 3A, Child Nutrition Update. Dr. Fosnot?
It's my pleasure tonight to bring the podium and welcome Michelle Wagner, our Child Nutrition Director. And she's going to share with you a few aspects of our program, and I think you'll find one of them very delicious tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Can you hear us better?
Gotcha.
Thank you, President Eastgate and members of the board for having us come today to discuss just some different things that we have going on in our department. Here we go. So I'm Michelle Wagner, Director of Child Nutrition, and I have with me Renee Peterson. She's with Bismarck High School Community-Based Employment Education. And so tonight, we're just going to talk about some of the different partnerships that we have within Bismarck Public Schools and the community.
So, thank you, Michelle. We have a partnership at Bismarck High School. This young man is named Gavin. He's doing a job site in the cafeteria. Some of our students in this program, it's Community-Based Employment. Many of our students are in the community. And a lot of times, they start out within the school. So Gavin works at Bismarck High School with a job coach. And some of the things he's working on is obviously job skills, self-advocacy, communication. And those are things related to his IEP goals for having a job someday. At Bismarck High School, he's experienced an inclusive environment, very friendly coworkers. He feels like his job is very meaningful within the schools. We also have students at various places, library, mailroom, custodial services. Most of our students, though, our goal is to be in the community. So 35 is apparently the magic number for this year. We've, the Community-Based Employment has been a program in BPS for 35 years. We work with students with unique learning needs to build job skills. So we start with interviews, applications. We have a lot of job coach assistants from instructional aides, and they work a lot on social skills. So I'm one of the facilitators. I'm at Bismarck High School. We also have Nicole Lund and also Jennifer Sick there at the other two high schools. We serve life education also. We currently have 35 students out in the community at various businesses. Typically, they trade each semester, so they have many experiences. Sometimes they stay. Ultimate goal is to be hired. And recently, some of our graduates of our program have been hired at Cashwise, McDonald's, E-Waste, Burger King, Nothing Bunt Cake, and many others. We have around 40 business partnerships. The list is there. Grocery stores, automotive, Parks and Rec, daycares, restaurants, coffee shops, nursing homes. And overall program goals, again, job skills, career exploration, and just increasing the chance of competitive employment. So that's a quick overview of the program. If anyone has any questions for me?
Board members, any questions so far? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say, when Renee approached me on this, I took it to my staff, and they were a little bit nervous about it. But I've heard nothing but positive feedback. They love Gavin. They love having him in there. They said he just kind of lightens up the mood, and they really enjoy him coming in. So, thank you. So I want to touch base a little bit about some of the community partnerships that we have with our department. First, I'd like to talk about our local foods coordinators. There's two of them now, as you can see in the picture. Amanda Smith is in the blue shirt, and Clarissa Bachman is in the black shirt. And what we've, we've gone through about four local coordinators in the last four years, because it's a very part-time position. So we seem to keep them for about a year, and then they move on to full-time employment. And so when Jenna left this last year, we really tried to look at, how can we make sure that we are building on the work that they're doing? To start over every year with a local foods coordinator, we weren't really getting anywhere. And so, at that time, we decided to look at our two employees, Amanda and Clarissa, that are my elementary supervisors for child nutrition. So they each have nine kitchens that they oversee. And we realized, a lot of the work that they do as local foods coordinators does deal with Bismarck Public Schools, with our Farm-to-School Program. It's probably the largest portion of their, of their, the profile that they have. But they also work with the local farmers markets, and then the community orchards with Bismarck Parks and Rec. So again, this is just a unique opportunity that the city of Bismarck, Bismarck Parks and Rec, and Bismarck Public Schools all combine together to support this position. We're the only entity in the state that has something like this. And so it really helps kind of bring all of those together. So one of the first jobs that Amanda and Clarissa were tasked with was our corn husking day. Because it doesn't just happen. You know, there's a lot of coordinating that takes place before that. So they reached out, we did our bids, they helped with that. Vulcan Farms is our farmer, right outside of Lincoln. Manokan Farms is where we source our corn from. We did 500 dozen ears of corn this year, and we learned that last year, we needed more help. So they reached out to Gate City Bank and Touchmark Senior Living Center, and it was wonderful. The, everybody that came had a great time. We also had some of our own BPS students that came in and helped. We were able to process 500 dozen ears of corn in one week. So we did 250 the first day, husted all, another 250 dozen ears the second day. And then the cooks processed it, cooked it, and got it ready to go Thursday and Friday. So really, 500 dozen of ears, and again, many hands make light work. So we couldn't have done it without our volunteers. So again, a big thank you to Touchmark and to Gate City Bank for giving us their volunteer time. Just some other things to touch on, because October is Farm-to-School Month. So I always like to kind of talk a little bit about what we're doing. Over 2,000 pounds of cucumbers have come in so far. This is just for the elementaries. Watermelon has been a huge success, and I think you guys are going to get to taste that a little bit later. And you'll get to see what the kids have been trying. So we brought in over 2,000 pounds of watermelon. We bring in about 600 pounds at a time. We process 300 pounds, send it out to half of our elementary schools. And then the next day, they come back and they process another 300 pounds, so that it goes out fresh to the rest of the schools. So you can just kind of see here, this is them down at Moses Kitchen. There's no machine for watermelon. It's all muscle to get through that watermelon. So Dwight Duke is who we source our watermelon from. And it's wonderful. The kids have absolutely loved it. Some of the other items that we've done locally, this picture I just kind of wanted to show off. I feel like I'm just bragging a little, because they kind of look like stock photos. I feel like the peppers and the tomatoes, for sure, look like something you'd get off the internet. Let me guarantee that these are actual products that are coming in from our farmers that are going out to our students. So it's just so, it's just so beautiful. It's just, I don't know, I love it. All right, so with all of this that we're doing, what I think we're running into is our current model that we have, where we're cooking in each kitchen. We have, I would say, our biggest challenge is our employment. We are constantly running short on staff, just like everywhere else. And so I think if we want to continue this, we need to look at how can we be more efficient? Like I said, labor and productivity are, we could definitely increase our efficiencies with that. If we had a central kitchen, if we went to more of that central kitchen model, we can increase our scratch cooking, because we can bring in more local products, which then leads to more of that scratch cooking that we could do for all the schools. Space and efficiency are definitely major problems that we face right now. So this picture is down at our warehouse. This is the elementary produce that comes in for one week, and this is the area that we're working in. You know, she's, she's got it all on carts. We're boxing it up, switching it, and reshuffling, and then getting it out to the schools. And so I was kind of curious, what does our meal participation look like? So my first year was in 2015. I was hired August of 2015. And so we were serving 1.8 meals. Did I lose our slide? And right now, we're serving 2.2 million meals. So it's an increase of 25% in our meal participation from 2015 to last year. So those were last year's full numbers. And so I think, again, that's where it just shows, like, we need to look at our current model and how we're approaching this. We're definitely going to be more efficient if we have some sort of central location. We need less staff hours to man that central location. It brings equity to all of our students. You know, right now, we can't have local ground beef for all students. We can just only have it at our secondaries, because our elementaries don't have the capability to cook local ground beef. So that, there's just some efficiencies that we can have with, with, sorry, I lost my train of thought there. If we went to that central kitchen model. So I guess that was it. The, if there's any questions that we can answer for you guys?
Board members, any questions, comments? Mr. Lee?
Thank you, President Eastgate. I just want to thank you, Mrs. Wagner and Mrs. Peterson, wherever. Can't see her, she's hiding. But, thank you both. I just love the Farm-to-School. If not here, where, right? I mean, this is so, so awesome. And I love the local sourcing, and I'd love to see that equity. So I appreciate all the work you all do every day. And also that, you know, it's good to bring this to the forefront of board members. It's something I think we would all like to see solved. I like the central kitchen model, for sure. It's good. And then the Community-Based Employment, that's just so awesome. You know, I saw a picture of Christian McMurty up there, a recent Centry grad. He's over at Gifted Bean, which is just such an awesome place inside the Bismarck Public Library. So, very well done. I just appreciate the report. Thank you both.
Board members, any other comments? Yeah, as Mr. Lee said, thanks so much for bringing all this to us. You're right, on the stock photos, it looks amazing. Also, at the very end of the slideshow, you'll notice Dr. Jeff Fosnot sitting with, I think it's elementary students enjoying a lunch. I also had a chance earlier this year while speaking to some freshman students to enjoy turkey and gravy, which is easily one of my favorite meals. I don't know if that goes on the Farm-to-table, but it's been a favorite of mine since kindergarten. So it's pretty awesome what you guys were able to do. And I like to even ask my own kids in school what they have, and some of their favorites are with beef. I go, "Did you know that beef is locally sourced?" I have to kind of explain what that is sometimes. But it's really awesome what you guys are doing. We appreciate it. And our, as you know, our community partners, the people that are providing the corn, the beef, all the local stuff that we have going on, it's just really remarkable to see a school district working, engaging with so many people in the community. And we know your guys' staff has a huge part of that. So, thanks very much. Dr. Fosnot?
Yeah, one, both of you, well done. Thank you for taking care of our kids and giving them opportunities that extend their classroom. Thank you, Renee. What I really appreciate, and I didn't even pick up my own picture, maybe that's when it cut out, is when my picture went up, it went dead. But I'd also like to applaud her. She had Superintendent Basler and a Commissioner Garing in for a day to celebrate this Ag-to-school connection. And what I really appreciated is she was so complimentary of the work that Michelle and her team were doing to get ready. And he just said, you know, "500 ears of corn, that's a lot of corn." And then she corrected and said, "No, 500 dozen ears of corn." And he was thoroughly amazed that we processed that much corn. So, well done.
Thank you, Dr. Fosnot.
Yep, it looks like we have. Thank you so much. I also know board members, they brought us in some watermelon to try later. So I was asked earlier if that's going to work at the board, and I said, "Well, of course it is." We're very much hands-on learners here. We encourage that. So, thanks so much for bringing us some samples. We look forward to trying that after the meeting. Appreciate you. Next up on our agenda, item 4 is public comment. The board recognizes the central role that parents play in the education of their children, and we support active parent involvement in the educational process. The board's practice of public comment reflects and aligns with Policy BCBA and the spirit of its intent. For classroom issues, it's best to follow the chain of command, which would be through the teacher, then to the principal, the assistant superintendent, and ultimately to Dr. Fosnot. For district issues, please reach out directly to Dr. Fosnot's office. If you do speak tonight, we simply ask that you be responsible, be helpful, and be respectful. Our BPS students deserve to have adults model the expectations that we have for them. Groups are urged to select one spokesperson. Individuals will be limited to no more than four minutes, and we notify with 30 seconds remaining to conclude their remarks. The board will not debate issues as presented, but will take such matters under advisement. With that, if anybody has public comment, please stand and approach the podium if you'd like to speak tonight. Relatively empty room tonight. I don't see anybody stepping forward. Public comment will now be closed. We'll move into item 5 in the agenda, monitoring district operations. 5A is OE7, Asset Protection.
And, thank you, board members. I'd invite Business Manager, Mr. Scher, to come up and present OE7.
Thank you, President Eastgate, members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to report out on OE7. I'm pleased to say that all indicators are showing in compliance. Just a couple of things that I want to point out to the board for consideration in the report. First is, you may have heard recently, we had a school district that had some ACH fraud. So I would like to think that Bismarck Public Schools has good controls in place. I don't think it would happen here, but we do have multiple steps in the process. Just so you, I wanted you to know that, because like, well, what happened? Could it happen to us? I would hope it would not happen. We have enough controls in place that it wouldn't happen. The other thing I want to talk a little bit about is insurance. Casey Mueller, our Director of Technology, and I struggle with this every year. The balance of cyber slash data breach insurance with the cost of insurance. And, you know, how do you make sure you have enough, you know, you have adequate protection, but still that you can afford it and be, you know, good stewards of taxpayer dollars? So that's something we're always looking into. And then the last thing is, I know the board was very involved with cash management in the last year and a half or so. And, you know, we've put steps into place to really reduce and incentivize non-cash options for all of our employees. So those are the kind of the big three things that I wanted to share with the board, and then I would answer any questions on any of the indicators that you would have.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Board members, any questions for Mr. Scher? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board? Mr. Lee?
President Eastgate, I would move that we accept OE7 Asset Protection as in compliance as presented.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher?
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pressky?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 5B is GC4, Officers' Roles. We'll have a public reading, and then the board can determine if we retain or amend GC4 Officers' Roles, as well as determining if we're in compliance. Here's the reading. Officers' Roles: The officers of the board are those listed in this policy. Their duties are those assigned by this policy and others required by law. President: The president provides leadership to the board, ensures the faithful execution of the board's processes, exercises interpretive responsibility with integrity, reflecting the spirit and intent of the board's policies, and normally serves as the board's official spokesperson. The president has the following specific authority and duties. Number 1: Monitor board actions to assure that they are consistent with the board's own rules and policies, and with other obligations imposed by agencies whose authority supersedes the board's own authority. 1A: Conduct and monitor board meeting deliberations to assure that board discussion and attention are focused on board issues as defined in board policy, CGC3 for reference. 1B: Assure that board meetings, discussions are productive, efficient, and orderly. 1C: Chair board meetings using the authority normally vested in the chair as described in Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised. 1D: Lead timely board meeting debriefings and periodic self-assessments to ensure continuous process improvement. Number 2: Assure the compilation of the board's summative evaluation of the superintendent. Number 3: Represent the board as its official spokesperson about issues decided by the board and other matters related to official board business. Number 4: Execute all documents authorized by the board, except as otherwise provided by law. Number 5: On behalf of the board and in concert with the superintendent, develop proposed board meeting agendas consistent with the board's annual calendar. Number 6: Make all interpretive decisions aboard policies and the governance culture in board superintendent relationship sections using reasonable judgment. The president is not authorized to: A) Make any interpretive decisions about policies created by the board and the results in operational expectations policy areas. Interpretation of these policies is the responsibility of the superintendent. Letter B: Exercise any authority as an individual to supervise or direct the superintendent. And letter C: Serve as a barrier between the superintendent and the board. The role of Vice President: The vice president shall serve as president in the event of the president's absence or inability to perform assigned duties. This brings the end of the reading, GC4, Officers' Roles. Follow that reading. Any conversation, or what are the wishes of the board?
I'd move that we retain GC4 Officers' Roles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Scher, if you can call the roll, please?
Peterson?
Yes.
Pressky?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. And how's the board find us?
I would also move that for GC4 Officer's Role, the board is in compliance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Scher?
Pressky?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 6 on the agenda is Matters Reserved for Board Action. 6A is GC2, Governing Commitments. Dr. Fosnot?
If you remember, last time, board members, you had first reading, the second reading of these changes that you requested. You have them in your packet. So, Part 2 of Governing Commitments, GC2, I'll just read the second paragraph of Part 2. The board is responsible for its own performance and commits itself to continuous improvement. The board will assure that its members are provided with training and professional support necessary to govern effectively as a means to assure continuous improvement. The board regularly and systematically will monitor all policies in this section and may assess the quality of each meeting. As reworded.
Thank you, Dr. Fosnot. Thanks for the work on this, as we talk about improving some of our own governance and how we can make it be more, I guess I would say, congruent to what we're actually trying to accomplish. With that, board members, any questions for Dr. Fosnot on this, or what are the wishes of the board? Mr. Lee?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the revisions to Policy GC2.
And I would second.
We have a motion and a second? Seeing no more discussion? Mr. Scher?
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pressky?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. And item 6B, Board Member School Visits. I know we have several here tonight to share about some of their school visits. Who would like to go first? Mr. Lee's light is on. Please bat leadoff for us tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I do have two reports to give tonight. My first one was my visit to Silver Ranch, home of the Stampede. I first toured the building with Principal Jordan, and it's just hard to believe it's been three years since we opened the school. It really doesn't seem that long ago. We were standing out in a pasture with golden shovels, just so excited about this new school. And the first thing I did was I ran my fingers across the sensory panels in the hallway, because that's the coolest thing in the world to me. It's the simple things in life. Just so cool. And that's where they were actually installed correctly. So, thank you, Mr. Scher. I was struck by the serenity. It was really quiet for an elementary school. And so I asked Principal Jordan about that, and she feels strongly, her teachers do an amazing job with tier-one instruction, and their passion for tier-one instruction is certainly evident. She's very proud of their academic and behavioral record. She feels strongly, they are a data-driven school, and really seek out opportunities for enrichment and gifted education, believing every one of their kids is entitled to one year's growth. And I said, "That's going to warm Mrs. Peterson's heart," which I know it does. And it's something we talk about a lot, and it truly is easier said than done. It's great work, and they do a fantastic job there. Principal Jordan is a huge champion of the teachers in her building, stating that they are an amazing group of educators that are driven and motivated to learn. They're eager to challenge one another, and she really couldn't be more proud. So, you know, when you think of a new school, it's essentially a startup, and not unlike a business startup, and it comes with many challenges. The biggest of which is finding your identity and creating a sense of belonging. And when you bring teachers and kids from other buildings into a new space, it takes time to form that community, and you have to be real intentional about relationships. And it was just evident to me that all that hard work that they've done up there has paid off. It's a school with a great climate and culture, and that is thanks to Principal Jordan and all the adults in that building. I spoke with the head cook, and she was passionate about every child, seeing a smile on their face when they come to lunch. And she was a mother herself, she is a mother herself, so she knows the importance of connecting with each child and making their day a little better. The biggest challenge at Silver Ranch is growth. Principal Jordan believes in being intentional about the systems that are implemented. So regardless of when more kids come, and if you look at that building and that area, more kids are coming. Regardless, when they do come, Silver Ranch will be ready. Principal Jordan commented that she feels very supported by central office, especially Mr. Barnhart, stating she is supported 1,000%. She appreciates the board's commitment to smaller class sizes. And this, I thought this was just a great statement on her behalf. She stated, "Everyone in her building wants to support every child, and it's smaller class sizes that make that possible." So it's a great way to sum up my visit there. It was just an awesome visit. Great school. Great, great school. My second visit was to Miller Elementary, home of the Magicians. As I was walking in, I bumped into Mr. Barnhart. I knew that was a bad omen. He was, I'm sure he was there to see the same guy I was, so there was a little scheduling mishap, and Mr. Barnhart was gracious enough to exit and let me do my visit. So, this is Principal Matt Gunther's fourth year already. That seemed to go fast as well. And as we toured the school, I couldn't help but think, he's a living testament to the phrase his dad made famous at Centry High School, "Man is gregarious by nature." We are social beings, and there are a few bigger social settings than our schools. We, of course, as a board, we were involved with the micro boundary change, that relieved pressure at Pioneer and brought more kids to Miller. And you really, truly can feel that change when you walk through. Much of it is very, very positive. But essentially, they have become a more populated school overnight, which comes with challenges. Principal Gunther acknowledged those challenges, which have been met head-on by his team. He spoke highly of his staff, stating that they step up to every challenge and that they have really grown as a team. The staff support and encourage each other. There's just a nice mix of veterans and young teachers. They learn and grow from one another, and he truly couldn't be more proud. He believes the biggest challenge at Miller is something we talk about often, retention. There is more and more stress that the classroom teacher takes on, and the cycle from the excitement and exhilaration of that first week of school until the mid-year doldrums and disillusionment is accelerating because of this. And I thought it was just a really interesting discussion, because I think we see it, we feel it, and we know that there's more and more pressures that fall upon the school. And I do believe this has to be a pressing issue as we talk about it as a state with our legislators, because funds for services and programs have dried up, and the public school system has been the last resource standing. We are being asked to provide more specialized services than ever and simply not equipped to do it. We are being asked to provide more specialized services than ever and simply not equipped to do it. It has to be a talk that we have locally and as a state. Walking the halls, you you can see the pride the kids have in their school, their teacher, their principal, and their classrooms. I got allow a lot of who's he as I walked through the building, which is pretty normal. But I also surprisingly got a hug from a young lady. That doesn't happen ever. I don't know if I'm not approachable or what, but so I was excited. I asked Mr. Gunther about her, and she is one of many students for whom English is their second language. She's from the Ukraine. From the Ukraine. And I just couldn't help but think of the promise of America that's still alive in the hearts and minds of people, especially children, who have come here for a better life, and they find it first and foremost in our public schools. And I couldn't be more proud to to serve in my role in that moment for Bismarck Public Schools. So as we continued our tour, Principal Gunther was called upon, called up to the front office. I looked at him and said, you must be in trouble. Turns out it was anything but that. A senior football player at Century, Noah Baras, was visiting to present Principal Gunther with his difference maker award. Just a side note, if you haven't been on social media or seen Century Football's social media account, there's an incredible video of all the senior football players picking out a difference maker and going to their rooms and giving them a basket full of goodies. Noah told him what a great teacher he was, and it even made him, Noah, want to be a teacher. It was fun to be there for that, and it it got me thinking. I remember Matt Gunther when he was a little tyke. I watched him grow up much as I had in the BPS system. So I asked, who was your difference maker? It didn't take him long to say he had two that stood out, Gene Severson at Northridge, which was certainly one of my difference makers as well, and Jerry Wilson, another teacher-coach, who has made a difference in many people's lives. And then, of course, we talked about Jerry Lindblum because you can't talk about Wilson without talking about Lindblum. It's kind of a Rhine Bowl fry thing. If you know, you know. Principal Gunther feels very supported by central office, especially by our superintendent of elementary Brad Barnhart, and he has been really impressed recently that the LDI team has been more focused on building, more interactions, and they've been a great, great help. That was awesome to talk about that a little bit. So I had a really great visit to Miller and certainly enjoyed my time there.
Fantastic school visits there, Mr. Lee. Thanks a lot for batting off the, or yeah, batting leadoff on our whole year of those. Those were awesome. Very good. Ms. Peterson.
It's always hard to tap John Lee's
Yeah, that's tough.
school visits.
Glad I'm going last.
He's quite the storyteller. But yes, if you haven't seen that Century video, use a tissue because it's it's quite it's quite impressive. I think it's making its rounds, going viral. I was able to go to Solheim Elementary School with Principal Shelley Swanson and the and the Cougars. And obviously, I too was driving down South Washington, and all of my three boys went there that no, there's none of my kids that are still there. So I was definitely feeling all this, all the nostalgia as as I walked into the building, obviously being a part of that school system and a part of that building for many, many years, but it had been amazing to come back. I really hadn't been in since since COVID because that's when kind of some of my my kids were done with with that school. So it's it was great to be back. I was greeted by Rita, the secretary to the principal who helped schedule this, and and then waited a little bit in the lobby for Ms. Swanson to finish up a an observation. And so while I was sitting in the the lobby, I just couldn't help, you know, I think you're you're surrounded by culture when you walk into Solheim. And one of the things that they have right outside of the office is a living your best life bell and banner. And I didn't know this, and I didn't ring the bell, but when you, apparently what Shelley told me afterwards is that when a student, students ring the bell when they meet a either life goal, a learning goal, or a behavior goal. And she said an unintended consequence was that this bell like reverberates throughout the entire school. So when you ring it, people, you know, in the gym, in the classrooms, in the library, can all hear when students meet their goals. And so I thought that was so cool, and then they get to sign. And there were quite a few, I mean, we're only a month into school, and there were quite a few names that are that are already meeting their goal. The other thing that I saw was that they are, they celebrate a life skill, and theirs was integrity is doing the right thing when no one is watching. I thought that really echoed nicely with our our BPS, you know, dignity index and and thought that was a really nice way to to just to live those expectations and and that there, then finally, over on the other wall, right by where I was seated, you could see proudly that the the school has reached level four certification for the HRS certification and high reliable schools. And what's cool about that, and and, you know, educators, I think, know how much how much work this is. But it it really is an effort of both the the leaders in that school, the the district office that are supporting that vision, the the teachers in that building, all working together, and then most importantly, the students themselves. And to reach level four, which is what they've actually reached, it is, it includes student goal setting. So it's not just having some of these things in place. And what I what I also didn't, wasn't completely aware of is that each of those levels build on on each other, but they have to get recertified in each level. So you you can reach level four certified, but then lose your level one certification or so on. And so each time that you move to the next level, you have to prove and have the evidence to show that you're that you're still meeting and maintaining those level, those different levels. So level one is safe and supportive environment, which you can feel when you walk into that building. Level two, effective teaching in every classroom. Level three is guaranteed and viable curriculum. We've heard quite a bit of that just as a district initiative, but but it's it's lived and breathed at Solheim. And then level four is standards reference reporting, which all of our elementary schools are there, but it includes that student goal-setting piece, which again goes back to that banner, that living your best life. When they, when those students meet their own goals that they're setting, they get to ring that bell. So very proud. You know, you can see how proud Principal Swanson is about that that certification, and just she's to be commended as well as her teachers. I think that one of the the coolest, and I'm probably going to butcher the data because I wrote quick notes on on there, and and Principal Swanson is a data-driven instructor. So but she said that just reaching that level four certification, having those students setting their goals, it's led to an increase from 40 to 50% of their students meeting their learning targets to 80% of their students meeting their learning targets. So that's that's quite an impressive feat. Solheim is one of our larger schools and has over 600. And, you know, we've been in in quite a few larger schools. We were at Lincoln before and just seeing some of those large elementary, it's it's well well managed by all the teachers. And I mean, it's a, it's it's really a well-oiled machine when you're in that building and you see just the adults taking charge and really working with those students, but it does bring some some challenges. And I think that not only is there a portable on the property, which is new, you know, was new from for my kids' time. So I definitely wanted to see what those portables looked like and and how how that was kind of managed. But also what I didn't really think about with those large schools is they have one gymnasium and which means one kitchen. And it was not, you know, designed, I mean, it's working and it does what it needs to do for, you know, 600 and some students, but it's ideal probably for 450. So if we think of 600 students funneling through lunch from 11:30 to 1:00, also taking up gym space, you know, and and so they're doing double PE classes in that each day with one and a half gym teachers, plus the just the the management of it all. And it really combined what I was hearing Michelle Wagner talk about with that centralized kitchen and thinking about what's what kind of benefits that could bring to a school the size of Solheim and and being able to make sure I I kept saying, I was like, okay, do the kids get to eat? She says, yes, they get to eat. I was like, do they get to chew? And, you know, we kind of, we kind of joke, but we do know that that it it has to kind of be in and out and then out to recess and then back in. So it really does become a really a management deal, but they 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 do it, and they do it with with a smile. I think she also, when we went out to the portables, the fifth graders are out there, and I noticed right away. I said, is it pink day? Or is there just a lot of kids wearing pink? But it was pink. And and I think it was really fun to kind of see those those fifth grade teachers out there. And and I think Shelley does a really great job of just increasing that culture in her building. And she did say that the portables did kind of put a little bit of a dent in that, you know, just, you know, making some classrooms go out there when everybody else is inside, but she's devoted an entire wall to the fifth graders who have their work proudly displayed. I mean, those, the rooms are very nice, so it increases efficiency, but obviously not our our first option to have portables on on any of our schools' property. And then one of the things that I think that I also, you know, we talk about banners with that living your best life, but there's also a banner that talks about just different wellness things that are happening throughout the year. And just like that level certification, it's building on each each month so that parents and families can go go in and see what's kind of going on at the school. And just that week when I pulled up, it was fire prevention week. So there was a fire truck in the, you know, at first I was thinking I was coming in the middle of an emergency and didn't want to bother. But no, instead, we just had that community outreach and support with the fire firemen coming in and having all their gear and doing different classes, and that was really fun to see. You could see them setting up right away because I was there on Friday. You could see them setting up for conferences this week with the with the taking the library for the book, book, what, book, what, book fair. Thank you. I can tell I don't have elementary children anymore. I I did know what a book fair was a couple of years ago by by all means, but yeah, the book fair is there. So just constantly things, and Solheim is going to be a voting location. So just the things that our schools are doing to just manage the community and manage the space and and just just deal with all that, plus all the learning is just always so impressive of me or for me. And then I just asked the one thing that I I was like, okay, what what challenges other than the size and and that growth? And and I know I've I've heard a couple of teachers speak of it in here. They have a new literacy curriculum at the elementary level. I've heard really great things about it. The teachers really like it. I know that they they know that it's going to meet all of the students' needs. But it's new. And so just that newness and and learning a new curriculum when they've been used to whatever they were doing before, that that it really is overwhelming. And so just a shout out to teachers as we talk about just all the things that they're that they're managing, the time and the space, just being being aware of that, as well as just attendance is is something that I've been hearing more and more from all of our school leaders. And normally, when we would hear about chronic absenteeism and things like that, we always think of some of our at-risk families that 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 are definitely still a challenge. But she also really spoke about that some of our our families are just taking their children on extended vacations. They had eight families out in September for over a week. And so eight families, that's over probably 20, 25 students when you add it all up. And so just that constant individualized instruction that's needed to happen to make make sure that you're meeting those kids' needs before they go and when they return. So those were just some of those challenges I think we hear all the time, and it's just, you know, thank a teacher when you're out and about because they are are definitely managing a lot as well as those principals. So want to thank Shelley for taking me around and, you know, making me feel all the feels with my my high school students and senior and just remembering all the all the good old days feels like yesterday, and it's seems like a long time ago. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks so much, Ms. Peterson. I like that. Thank you. Thank a teacher. Thank a teacher when you're out and out in the community. That's great. I also have a couple of school visits to give here tonight, and I just want to say thanks to both Ms. Lee and Ms. Peterson for really engaging that dignity index as well. I'm hearing that loud and clear from board members. I think it's, you know, on our minds as we even are going through the building and that we have a chance to interact and ask these questions and find out how we can continue to grow that. As I did my two, I definitely am kind of leaning this idea of even people over programs. So we have so many great programs in our schools, and then who are the people behind it? And what are they doing? How are they interacting with other teachers, with students, and what that looks like for our schools? My first visit was about three weeks ago at Horizon Middle School. It happened to be a Friday, which she doesn't love a Friday. A little lecture, energy and excitement, usually at the, especially at the secondary level, getting ready for football games and all the other fun stuff going on on a Friday night. As I entered the office, it was a Friday morning. It was beautiful outside. And I was very fortunate because Dr. Oban greeted me there in the office, and he said, Mr. Eastgate, great you're here today. A buddy walk is going on outside around the track, and the entire school is about to pour out the doors. How do you feel about us not sitting in the, I was like, fantastic. So I was super excited to be there. Literally, as we walked outside of the office, there were just every grade, all the kids, all the educators were just pouring out the doors. We've had a chance to hear about it a little bit as board members, but peer-to-peer is an amazing organization that celebrates kids of all abilities in our district. It started at the high school level. It's now trickling into our our middle school level as well. And it's such a great program. And I know Mrs. Tammy Doppler and the Special Education Department at Horizon kind of helped coordinate and orchestrate this, but all the teachers were out there. All the educators were out there, all the kids. They had a DJ. The music was pumping. Kids were on a walk. And throughout that entire week, this is kind of, I believe, the culmination of a whole week of just celebrating students of all abilities. And so it was it was very upbeat. It was uplifting. We had some parents there as well. And I, it was fun for me, I have to say, a little bit selfishly, just to mix it up a little bit as a school board member at a school visit. And that I had a chance to interact with just kids of all grades as they're coming by in in a pretty informal setting. High-fiving, kind of dancing and bebopping to the music a little bit. And it was also fun just to get a chance to talk to so many educators. You talk about thanking a, thank a teacher, Mrs. Peterson. I mean, that was kind of my goal as I went on the track. Dr. Oban was right in stride with me, and so we had a chance to still visit and talk about the the great things going on at Horizon. I've had two students myself go through there with a third there right now, and so I'm pretty well familiar with the school itself. Horizon's in in good hands. Dr. Oban's doing a real nice job up there. He talked about just how how good the school feels this year, just about helping try to try to continue to build good culture. He talked some things, we talked a little bit about budgets, and how things are going there and how those are going really well, teachers understanding that we do have some budget constraints that go on at times and how they're they're submitting kind of some of those internal requests that they might have to Dr. Oban, and he's been able to say yes to all of them because they fit our needs, not maybe always our wants, but they're coming with needs, and he's able to grant that. Talked about career-ready practices. So those were great things as well. I don't want to make it sound like all we did was run around a track. But I think more than anything, just to highlight that peer-to-peer, I think, is a great thing as well. And it's continuing throughout throughout our entire district. I mean, Mr. Lee, I I got a chance last week to watch your nephew throw a touchdown to my son, which was super fun playing flag football with inclusive sports at the bowl or at the dome. I'm sorry. So just a lot of great things. I I just think it's awesome that we're continuing to see kids benefit from that as well across our entire spectrum of students. So I had an awesome time at Horizon. My next visit was at BSEP just this last week. I got to go to BSEP. And as I was, as I walked in, I was greeted by Jenny there, and I I had a chance to sit down with Mrs. Bach and Mrs. Olson and Mrs. Carlson, and they presented me with my Teaching Them to Be Kind. What a great message, talking about the dignity index. That fits really well. So I got this great T-shirt. Thank you. And beyond that, again, so many great things going on. I learned a lot. I learned a lot because BSEP is not like all of our other buildings. You know, I had, they gave me kind of a little cheat sheet, which I'll just briefly show with everybody. But it it talks about right track, early head start, head start, community friends, and early childhood special education, which is all taught there to kids. They're doing, you know, prenatal education with parents all the way up to kindergarten students in that building. And some of those are federally funded, federally mandated programs, and some of those are working right alongside and strictly for BPS. And so learning a lot about that, but again, more than anything, when we talk about people before programs, Dr. Fosnot or Mrs. Bach, and I'm not sure I have to think or blame, but there was a photo that got onto the BPS website. I had a chance to go into Mrs. Carrie Knudsen's classroom. I joke about the blame. But I had the great joy of sitting down with seven four-year-old boys that were there, that were part of early childhood special education, as well as a couple of community friends. And what a cool deal. So these four-year-olds are all learning, you know, where a nose is, where a chin is, and an elbow. And the way they learn that is by putting Band-Aids on a on a dummy there in the classroom. And that day, I got to be the dummy. And so fitting. No, but it was really great. It was it was truly super fun to get to interact with these kids. They were so much fun. They're they're so quick to just be so welcoming. We have a lot to learn from four-year-olds, just so welcoming. And after that, we had a chance to tour BSEP. I think that school, they're serving over 606 families right out of that school. Not always there internally in the building, but quite often they are. And monthly, through some of the Head Start program, just quickly looking at some of my notes, they're doing such great things with families as well. Doing, you know, they're they're taking new parents out once a month socials to a cooking class, to the zoo, to the pumpkin patch, doing some education along with that, helping some of these folks with some of their early childhood interventions. And so just some great things that the district is doing with resources that they have to help with those. We stepped into a head, into one of the Head Start classrooms as well, and I had a chance to watch the kids during free choice. And they're kind of rambling around, and so three little boys helped make me some food in the kitchen, much like we learned about tonight about child nutrition. So super, super fun. And I I just so appreciate the staff and all the great work they're doing there with young kids as well as parents and helping us do a good job with kids. Just the last note, as I left BSEP, it was just kind of fun. There was some recess going on, and I just stopped before I got in my truck just to, you know, you kind of got to take in that sandlot view of the kid just running around. And I have this little kid kind of wipes out on the track, and just all these kids gather, are you okay? And they help up this little three, four-year-old kid. And again, you know, I mentioned we have a lot to learn from four-year-olds. We just have a lot to learn from kids. You watch kids on a playground at that age, and you you kind of learn how we can interact and and care about each other as well. So BSEP's doing so many good things. There's a, there's a lot there. There's a lot there to share about. The community friend is a lot like peer-to-peer, even at the BSEP level. So so many great people that make those programs happen, but it's about the people. And so just really honored to, as a board member, to get to go. And so just really honored as a board member to get to go view and witness some of that. So those were my two visits tonight. Thanks for listening, board members. Moving on with the agenda, we have item seven, which is the Consent Agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
Since I haven't talked much tonight, I will
Thank you, Ms. Preskey.
I'm just joking. I'll move that we adopt the Consent Agenda.
Somebody else has to second that, though.
Second.
And Mr. Hager with the second. Thank you. Mr. Sheriff, you can call a roll, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item eight is the Superintendent's Report, 8A, Community Transportation Forums. Dr. Fosnot?
I guess it's my time to talk now, I haven't talked much either. Yeah, I just wanted to give you, and I guess our listeners online, a little update of what we've been doing in regard to that transportation forums. Right now, we've completed three community forums with the Consensus Council. I think those have been good attendance. When you think of twenty-eight thousand parents, fourteen thousand kids, we're just scratching the surface, right? And we heard that right away in our first forum, and within the second one, and I wasn't able to be at the third, but my team tells me same thing, just how are we going to get more input? How are we going to get more people to be involved? Particularly when, and we did, and we changed the message as we went, it was a transportation report that drove this discussion, so we'd kind of put it underneath that qualifier, that name, as we went out, but quickly realized people weren't picking up that the recommendation was some bell time schedule changes. So we were very intentional to put that out in the second and the third forum, to make sure we got more people, we did. So I think that's been really well. Again, the Consensus Council, as you're well aware, will take all that input from those evenings and kind of wrap that into a summary document, which will go to Operational Excellence, and I'm sure back to you, so you'll receive that when it's done, they're working on it. We were just emailing with Ann at Consensus Council today. But that's not all. Once we got through the first meeting and said, "Okay, three focus groups is not probably enough," since that time, all of my team has been out into other opportunities. It could be PTO meetings, which I have one tonight right after this, it could be an IPAC meeting. Anytime that our principals are saying, "Hey, we're gathering some parents in our building, would you want to come over, is that working your schedule?" We're trying to accommodate that and get to those. Do a really short version of the presentation, because we don't have the group part of it, you've all been there, that group dialogue part, but just to listen. And then we've been transcribing that feedback, and then also giving that to the Consensus Council, so they can wrap that into their recommendations, and I guess they're not recommendations, they're report, and just make sure we capture it all. So I think that's been a positive, but I wanted to just share with you, as we continue to go down this path, I do believe that there's a need to maybe protract the decision, the initial decision-making process, push it out a little bit, to allow some parents, some community members, some more input, and then make sure that we're just informing people, make sure we're not leaving a blind spot somewhere. And I'm not saying we're going to get to all forty-eight thousand parents, because sometimes you just don't know, right? But I don't think anyone's going to be able to criticize us for not trying. We're going to try our very best to be open and communicative and try to hear people. So what I gave to you, I guess what's on the screen tonight, is kind of the timeline for decision-making coming forward. We have already put out in social the initial slideshow that we shared at the first meeting. There will be more coming out on social, so parents can access it, but we wanted to have the meeting tonight, just to bring it up, people can hear it in case they've missed it. They can, we're talking about changing bell schedule to make our transportation system safer, higher quality, and more efficient, more reliable. So share more about that. We'll talk about the process, but then today, we did a video of that presentation just for staff, and that's in production now, that'll go out to survey to make sure our internal public all hears it, because they all can't get to meetings either all the time. But, so they hear the message from me, and what we're planning to do, what we're thinking about doing, and then allow them a conduit to give us feedback. Then October fourteenth to the twenty-fifth, we'll just continue going to PTO, IPAC meetings, school-based meetings, we'll continue to do that. We have some that are arriving in our inboxes almost every day from principals, so we'll continue to address those. The plan is to take, just to give a short process update to Operational Excellence, is what we're doing, this timeline, how we're garnering more feedback in late October. November fifth is Election Day. You might say, "Well, why is that protract decision-making?" I do think it's important for us to listen to our voters. I mean, I am no way saying vote yes or vote no, that's not my job. My job deals in the facts. Everybody else can make their own mind, you know, you go to the ballot box, you cast your own vote, but I do think for us, it would be informative to hear what the voters say, and they're going to answer that. By the sixth of November, we'll know how they feel about some of these, the costs that we have within the public school system, and particularly for transportation, when you just look at the Harlow's contract, three point six million dollars, and what the state reimburses us for that cost of the district, local taxation's picking up sixty-seven percent of it. So the state's not even close to what they do for general operating, like for cost of education, they're well below that for transportation reimbursement. So I think the future, based on what Measure Four, what we say with Measure Four, when we all cast our vote, matters, because most of that, we have a substantial portion of our transportation costs coming from local taxation. And I think Measure Four won't have a significant impact year one, because we're supposed to be stable-funded. I think the concern I would have is what happens year three, year five, year ten, and I think we have to take that in consideration. But again, I think we let our voters decide first, and then we'll know, then we can act. So based on the Election Day, my thought was to get a video and a parent survey out the week after, and the week of November eleventh, and then let parents weigh in about what they see as good, bad, questions, have you thought of type stuff about the bell time change, and then end of November, get it back to Operational Excellence to build a recommendation for the board, bring that to the board meeting on November twenty-fifth, and give you, here's our recommendation. And then also hear your questions. So between now and then, what questions do you have? What questions do you hear people asking? What do you say? "Well, Jeff, that was a great proposal, great recommendation, but you forgot this." And then give us a month to respond to your questions, like, here's what we see as the challenges, we heard this from you, how do we have to fix it, what do we have to do? And then come back in early January, which is a little bit longer than we planned initially, but I think it's well within a proper timeline for us then take, let the board take a final act on if they endorse this change or not. And really, it's up in the air. You can reject it, and we'll continue with where we are, or you could take the recommendations, whatever those may be, and move forward. But we'll do that in early January. That should give plenty of time. I guess my point is, that should give plenty of time for our parents and our families to hear the message, hear the message a couple of times, provide their feedback, and then we can take all that in before we make a recommendation. Hopefully, you're okay with that?
Yes. Board members, any comment or question for Dr. Fosnot? Looks like the board's okay with that.
All right. Well, we'll do our very best to do that, again, for our patrons, I've been really trying to be as open and transparent and informative as we can, because these are tough choices, these are tough decisions, and we want to make sure we have safe, reliable, and efficient transportation system.